You all sit. Mary, John, Mike. Dan Stashby sitting. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could remain standing, I wanted to have a moment of silence for a former employee and just a wonderful, wonderful human being and an outstanding human being. Loretta Albin passed away. So if you would, remember her with the love and kindness that she gave so freely to everyone. Thank you, everyone. Jessica's statement of publication.
Take notice at this regular agenda meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council being held on this fourteenth day of October 2025 has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Roberts.
Donna had called me. She had conflict in her schedule, which was acceptable under our policies.
Sinarski.
Here.
Zabrowski.
Yes, here.
Okay, approval of prior minutes. Okay, approval of prior minutes. Okay, approval of prior minutes. I make a motion that we approve and accept December, September 23, 2025. I make a motion that we approve and accept December, September 23, 2025. I make a motion that we approve and accept September 23, 2025.
Somebody has to make the motion, Mayor. Somebody has to make the motion, Mayor. Somebody has to make the motion, Mayor.
I know, I'm just reading it. I know, I'm just reading it. I know, I'm just reading it. Then I'll look for the motion. Then I'll look for the motion. Then I'll look for the motion. Of regular and agenda sessions. Of regular and agenda sessions. Of regular and agenda sessions. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'm moved. I'm moved. I'm moved.
Roll call. Roll call. Roll call.
Councilperson's Novak. Councilperson's Novak. Councilperson's Novak.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Balka. Balka. Balka.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Felice. Felice. Felice.
Yes.
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 Sinarski. Sinarski. Sinarski.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Zabrowski. Zabrowski. Zabrowski.
Yes.
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 Okay. 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 We have an executive session. We have an executive session. We have an executive session.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 permits Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 permits Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council, the Borough of Seraval, County of Middlesex, State of by the Mayor and Borough Council, the Borough of Seraval, County of Middlesex, State of by the Mayor and Borough Council, the Borough of Seraval, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows: The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order New Jersey as follows: The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order New Jersey as follows: The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately 10 minutes that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately 10 minutes that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately 10 minutes to discuss the following matters personnel. to discuss the following matters personnel. to discuss the following matters personnel. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene in the in the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be in the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be properly brought properly brought before it at this time. properly brought before it at this time. before it at this time. The nature and content of this discussion, which a closed and closed session, shall The nature and content of this discussion, which a closed and closed session, shall The nature and content of this discussion, which a closed and closed session, shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. This resolution shall take effect immediately. This resolution shall take effect immediately. I need a motion. I need a motion. I need a motion.
Move the motion. Move the motion. Move the motion. The motion be approved on. The motion be approved on. The motion be approved on. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Roll call. Roll call. Roll call.
Councilperson's Novak. Councilperson's Novak. Councilperson's Novak.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Balka. Balka. Balka.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Felice. Felice. Felice.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Sinarski. Sinarski. Sinarski.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Zabrowski. Zabrowski. Zabrowski.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Take motion to go back into open?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Novak.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Give me one second. Public hearing on the following ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-five, borough of Serval, county of Middlesex. Ordinance amending the borough's fee exemptions to include the Serval Police Auxiliary.
Uh, councilman Balca?
You gotta open it to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, opening to the public on ordinance twenty-five twenty-five. Being no, uh, no call, uh, no, no one interested, uh, councilman Balca.
Move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on a second final reading and advertised according to law.
Second. Councilperson Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance, bond ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for various park improvements by in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating one million two hundred and forty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
This time I'll open the public portion for questions, Jim.
Mayor.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance until the November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting with no further public notice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Bond ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements by in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating six million three hundred and sixty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of six million forty-two thousand dollar bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Uh, at this time, is there anyone from? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance until the November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting with no further, third, excuse me, with no further public notice.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Uh, Novak.
I'm gonna abstain on that.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Bond ordinance number twenty-eight twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for various twenty twenty-five general capital improvements by in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating one million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Mayor, again, I make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance till the November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, but no further public notice.
Is there a second?
And second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
I abstain.
Uh, Zanarski.
Yes.
Bond ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for acquisition of various vehicles and equipment by in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating three million six hundred and eighty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three million four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Mayor, uh, again, I make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance until November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting with no further public notice.
And I second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Abstain.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Bond ordinance number thirty dash twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements by in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating two million seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Mayor, make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance till November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting with no further public notice.
And I second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Abstain.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Bond ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-five. Bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements by and ends in the borough of Serval in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating one million nine hundred thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million nine hundred thousand dollars in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Mayor, make a motion to carry the public hearing on this ordinance until November tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting with no further public notice.
And I second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Abstain.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-five and ordinance supplementing and amending ordinance number two dash twenty-four fix in the salaries of certain borough officials, officers, and employees for the years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven.
This time I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments, Jim?
I couldn't hear everything, but it sounded like we're all five of those ordinances tabled?
Continued.
I'm sorry?
Continued, not tabled.
Continued, okay, all right. Well, I, I would like to suggest, and I don't have an opinion, maybe these are wonderful, maybe these are, are good, um, maybe they're very necessary, but it's seventeen million dollars that we're talking about, or sixteen point seven million dollars.
Jim, you gotta stick to the ordinance thirty-two twenty-five.
Okay, all right. I would like to suggest on this ordinance as well as the others that were tabled, before that they are brought up, there be some discussion so that folks know what, what we're voting on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are, are there any other questions or comments? Being no other questions or comments, councilman Balca.
Move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second final reading and advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, uh, public portion on, on, uh, resolutions, are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to, to close the public portion and adopt the resolutions on roll call vote. Is there a motion?
Mayor, move the public hearing be closed and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zabrowski.
Yes.
Balca.
Resolution two oh two-five dash two-three-one stating on Adalex PO two oh oh-five-four-two-zero and two-five oh-five-five-oh-nine. Yes on all our items.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Have we deducted anything from the JCPN L bill for all of the lights that are still out?
The Jersey Central Power and Light Bill is not being paid at the direction of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Specifically for street lighting.
Okay, thank you very much. One other question, uh, two-three-three, Glenn, um, just to clarify, we only had one bidder on that?
We had two.
We did, and who was the other one?
Robert Wood Johnson.
And what was their cost to the resident, do you remember?
The costs were identical, but, uh, they were offering the borough no financial incentive.
So Robert Wood is charging three thousand dollars for a ride to the hospital?
I don't know what they're charging for a BLS response.
Well, isn't that what this contract is for?
This is for Hackensack Meridian.
Okay, but what are they charging for hosp, for a ride?
I, uh, I don't know what the, they, they charge at the Medicaid rate, which last I looked, which was some time ago, it was around five hundred dollars, but it's the same arrangement when resident, they, they soft bill residents are not obligated to pay the balance of the bill. They'll only take what the insurance covers.
Well, that's really not happening for all intents and purposes. I, I thought we only had them billing. I would really, I mean, when we first did this, there was such a discrepancy between twenty-seven hundred dollars for a ride from Meridian and only nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for a ride from Robert Wood for the same services, and it was one of the reasons why I wanted to go with Robert Wood, and the people are being billed. And, uh, before, I, I'm gonna have to vote no on this because if, if we don't know exactly what they're charging the residents, then I don't see how we can award a contrast. So I'll be voting, uh, no on, uh, two-three-three, and yes on everything else. Thank you.
Just to further that discussion, is there, uh, is there something that has to be done tonight? Or get some further, uh?
On the, um?
Further clarification on that issue so that everybody?
I don't know how to answer that.
I, I mean, we had the two respondents after the RFP process where everyone was scored. Out of the two respondents, Hackensack Meridian was the preferred choice out of the two we got.
Right, thank you. Is there anything? That was the bid sheet.
Yeah, the distinct difference for everybody's edification is, uh, we will receive from Hackensack Meridian sixty-four thousand dollars annually. Robert Wood would have charged us a hundred and fifteen thousand annually.
What are they charging the residents?
Again, it's based, I don't know what the prevailing Medicaid rate is. It's, it like, it somewhere around five, six hundred dollars is the prevailing rate. The arrangement is, is that they, they, they will accept in payment in full what the person's insurance has. If they don't have insurance or don't have enough insurance to cover the entire bill, it's a soft bill, they're not obligated to pay it, and, and they will not receive any kind of collection notice or anything. That's the arrangement that, uh, that we've been operating under and that we'll continue to operate under.
Zanarski.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the correspondence that's listed. I'm moved.
Yes, I'm a yes to.
Roll call.
You never asked him.
No, but he was first.
Oh, that's.
He motioned on the resos, so I, I got you first.
I'm definitely yes.
I was like, cause I did look.
That's right.
Um, that was you, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, and who was the second on that?
Second.
Second. Councilperson Novak.
Yes.
Balca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Zanarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, council reports administration and finance, councilman Balca.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next meeting, we're gonna discuss the best practices, results that we have, and, uh, progress, Mayor.
Progress, okay, thank you, councilman. Planning and zoning, councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor, I have just a couple of items. Uh, first and foremost, uh, Wednesday, October twenty-second, this is just to repeat, uh, we have the, at the Active Adult Center, uh, Jen, uh, Bell asked that I remind everyone that if you're interested in attending the Halloween party, uh, to see her early for that because tickets are available with her and her staff. Uh, secondly, an issue on affordable housing since our last meeting, uh, a judge, uh, recently dismissed the lawsuit that was filed by twenty-seven municipalities challenging New Jersey's affordable housing mandate. Uh, the ruling, uh, that the, that the judge said was that the law is constitutional, uh, and claimed that the, that the people move, that the municipalities that were moving this had no legal merit. We, on the other hand, did not choose this route. We chose a different path. We appealed our obligations through the proper process. I shouldn't say proper process, but a process that was provided, and luckily we were, uh, successful in reducing those numbers. My, my point isn't saying that one municipality did a better decision than another. My point being is that at the end of the day, this decision still is much deeper than expected, and it becomes really an institutional problem, which we've talked about before. And too often, I think, we oversimplify the issue, uh, and treat the symptom for expediency rather than addressing the real cause. And at the end of the day, um, we need to treat this as the problem that it is, uh, and work together at a grassroots level, not just our, not just our council, but councils through all the municipalities throughout the state in an effort, um, to find, uh, find a more fairer process by which we, uh, we are guided. So it's a more sustainable approach that supports affordable housing, but also protects our communities, particularly our own, from overdevelopment, which we all are, are facing at this moment. Uh, thirdly, uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, uh, two reminders that awareness, prevention, and early action are important. And, uh, I encourage everyone to stay up to date with their health screenings, which truly can save lives. But I wanted to highlight the serious issue of domestic violence and, and that families across our nation face. Uh, it's reported that about forty-one percent of women and twenty percent, twenty-six percent of men have experienced some form of, uh, partner violence throughout their, uh, their time, and too often survivors leave and return more than several times before finding lasting, lasting safety and support. I bring this up because I talk about our volunteers. We have a tremendous group, uh, the Serval Domestic Violence Response Team, uh, that has been afforded to our community for the last twenty-three plus years. A couple of months ago, we celebrated the refurbishing of their office, but I will tell you that they are a great resource for the families of Serval. Everything they do is confidential, although you do call the Serval Police Line, everything is handled in a confidential manner. They're very well-trained, and they have a number of resources available to provide to those that are seeking counsel and the support, whether it's resources from local, from county, or from state. Um, and that, I, I just think it's a great time, uh, while we're, while we're recognizing the, the value of, or the importance of this issue, to recognize the value of, of a resource that we have in our town, and one that's been extremely valuable. You know, in those last twenty-three plus years, uh, we started as the second DVR team in the Middlesex County, and we're probably, with the exception of Woodbridge, the longest-standing, longest-running, meaning that there haven't, hasn't been breaks in their coverage. And I want to thank all our volunteers, because there's a lot of work involved in doing that, for being steadfast in their advocacy, uh, for those victims and for our families. And, uh, from that perspect, perspective, it's just another example of how Serval responds to crisis, and that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Uh, public safety, councilman Kalisi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by, uh, presenting a document I have in my hands from Middlesex County. It's a, uh, resolution from a recent Board of County Commissioners thing, and this here, it informs us that at a recent meeting, the county commissioners unanimously approved a resolution, our resolution, that gives their official consent to a new local law passed by Serval, that's ordinance twenty twenty-five. So this law reduces the speed limit right here on Main Street between MacArthur and Washington Road. So the new speed limit is now twenty-five miles an hour. So the resolution was reviewed and recommended by the county engineer, and the county commissioners agreed it was in their best interest of both the borough and the county. And what I like about this is that every county commissioner signed off on this, so good job by everybody. So now for my, uh, the rest of my public safety report. Oh, yeah, and one more thing. So, um, we're expecting new signs for the twenty-five miles an hour soon. So, uh, Justin, if, uh, when it comes down to the engineers' report, or if you're ready now, just, any idea when these signs are coming?
As early as this week?
Okay, so very soon. Okay, so within this week, next week. So, um, expect enforcement, tell, tell your friends, tell everyone, expect enforcement soon thereafter, okay? So we've now reduced the speed that, from MacArthur Avenue to Washington Road, this whole section, so county road. Okay, over the weekend, our fire department worked closely with Public Works to prepare for and respond to the recent nor'easter. Thanks to their planning and quick action, the borough came through the storm safely with no major incidences to report. Chief Gavern also reports that Fire Prevention Week has been going very well with great community participation, and as, as, uh, October is Fire Prevention Month, it's a good reminder for everyone to check their smoke detectors and review their home safety fire plans. So, um, also under, uh, Chief Gavern's report, the department continues to grow. They're welcoming a new member from Perth Damboi, who's completing the background process. They also held a productive training drill using the new stabilization equipment that we purchased last year, so further strengthening their emergency response capabilities. Next is my report from OEM Director Chris Bardley. Uh, that report, uh, our emergency operations center was activated during the state of emergency, ensuring coordination among all departments. Earlier in the week, OEM, along with the police department and fire department, they also participated in a full-scale training drill with New Jersey Natural Gas and PSCNG, simulating a high-pressure gas leak. So these types of exercises are critical in keeping our team sharp and prepared for real emergencies. So finally, I want to recognize Police Chief, Police Chief Plumacher for his continued leadership, and thank all of our first responders, including Public Works employees, for their dedication, professionalism, and ongoing service to the residents of Serval. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Public Works, Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, um, everybody, I happened to be away this past weekend, and for the week before that, I was down with COVID, but George, uh, Gavern was in constant contact with me as well as the BA. Um, they did a great job, but I still really think it was the rosaries that got us through that. George does a great job with planning everything and, but, uh, we all know that we were spared for higher reasons. Also, they're, believe it or not, they are getting ready for snow, and again, hopefully, the rosaries will work with that. We've had a couple of years where we've really been lucky, I keep saying. Uh, how, how long that's gonna go on, I don't know. Um, one thing, just, uh, this weekend, uh, the nineteenth, I think it is, that we're gonna have the cultural artists having the movie in the park with the haunted walk, you know, that's, it's. Eighteenth, okay, I thought it was the nineteenth. It's really, uh, something the kids should really participate in, I'm looking forward to that. Um, I just want to say something about this with the ordinances. Bonding ordinances are usually done pretty much right after the, uh, the budget is approved. To, at the last minute, do this, I think, for some, some of these things, it might prove to be more expensive, because, uh, there's price increases going on with a lot of the vehicles. And I hope this doesn't, uh, cause us to wind up spending more money. This isn't something that was just dropped on us at the last second. It was part of the budgeting process. We all received a copy of the approved, not, and, of, I'm not happy with the way it was done. We used to have meetings on this. Instead, we were just handed a list that was approved by the BA and the, uh, CFO on what was going to be in the Capitol. But we did have that for weeks. We had the opportunity to, uh, to go over this with our, uh, department heads to see, you know, if, if this is what they wanted, if there's anything they could put off. I worked very hard with George as Public Works, as well as the Fire Chief. I even was touching base with the, uh, Chief of Police, you know, we were discussing different ways, you know, they were gonna get, get some of the equipment as opposed to bonding for it. And at the last minute to, and obviously there was some discussion on this, not with me, and I'm on finance, because the motions were made. I, I thought at first, the first one was because it was parks and Donna was in charge of parks, but to just do this with all of them at the last minute, obviously, there was some discussion by this council, because nobody asked a question as to why all of a sudden this was not, you know, it's just being put off. I just hope this doesn't wind up costing us more money in the long run. Very poor way to do business. Other than that, Mayor, progress.
Thank you. Uh, Water, Sewer slash Environmental and Recreation, Councilman Zanarski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first thing is on the water. Uh, the first time in a few months, we've been under two-hundred million as far as the water produced for our water department. Uh, the rain that we had doesn't matter much for a drought. We didn't have that much rain to really bring up any of the water tables. Uh, so continue your drought warnings and use water conservatively till we get back up to the top. Uh, the next one is environmental. The Cross Country Pipeline showed up at the environmental meeting with us over this week, so I just want everybody to be aware that they're coming around, all right? Uh, community garden, the community garden, Anton, I learned some from, actually, from Anton the other day. Anton's the master gardener that runs the garden. I just buy tomatoes, I plant tomatoes, we get big, they put the cages on, and then we pick tomatoes when they're ripe. But according to Anton, if you prune the tomatoes and you do this, you get quite twice the amount. So sure enough, we're doing that, and I got more tomatoes this year than I normally do. Uh, let's see, the bonfire, we had the bomber's bonfire last week. That was a great, there was a lot of people there, there was a lot of big fire. I'm glad to the Parks Department and Recreation Department that did a great job over there. Uh, what else do we have here? Uh, the family, the community garden at October eighteenth, one PM, bring your own food and chairs, but they have a picnic over there at the garden this week also. So there's a lot of things going on in town. Other than that, progress on the recreation. I want, just want to thank them for everything you're doing with the bonfire, the one that, uh, Mary made this week, and plus we got the one coming up at, uh, the Jerry Us Fields for the Halloween coming up. Other than that, progress, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have two things, uh, under my report. Uh, first thing is about the firehouse restoration. When Serval was founded as a township back in eighteen seventy-six, our leaders faced a challenge that might sound familiar, finding places to do the people's work as our young community grew. In nineteen oh-nine, the Township Committee approved construction of a township hall to meet those needs. Over the past century, this structure has served nearly every role the borough has asked of it. Every generation has found a new way to make this building serve, uh, Serval, adapting its use to fit the needs of the time, and that's exactly what we're doing again today. Converting the old, uh, firehouse into offices for our construction and code enforcement departments isn't changing its person, its purpose, it's continuing its legacy of public service. Our construction department has been operating out of a, out of temporary trailers for nearly twenty years. This project finally gives them a permanent home while preserving the building that has stood at the center of our community for more than a century. The interior will be updated to meet today's needs, but the building's historic character will remain intact, just as it always has through each new chapter of its story. This isn't just a renovation, it's a continuation of purpose. The old firehouse has always adapted to meet the needs of Serval, and now will do so once again, preserving our his, uh, preserving our history while serving our residents well into the future. Uh, next thing is, the borough has received several questions about the forty acres of privately-owned land next to Kennedy Park, and why was it included in Serval's fair share housing? Certain folks have spun this issue to fit a convenient narrative, but here are the facts. Under New Jersey law, every municipality is required to identify all potentially, all potentially developable properties when preparing its state-manded, mandated fair share housing plan. This requirement ensures towns meet their affordable housing obligations. We even reached out to the owner of this property, and, and we asked if we could purchase it for preservation. The owner said he, he has held it since nineteen ninety, and he wished to develop it. There are no current plans or approvals for construction on this property, and development may not occur for many years, if ever. While others focus on what might happen someday, we're focused on what is happening right now. We're investing in new park improvements, free youth sports, a plethora of new activities courtesy of Cultural Arts Committee, and major upgrades to Kennedy and Bailey Parks that residents can enjoy today. Serval is moving forward responsibly, protecting our open space, maintaining local control, and delivering real results for our community. Um, next item, Jessica.
General discussion items, admin and finance, authorization for the tax collector to refund taxes and cancel all subsequently billed taxes due to a hundred percent disabled veteran tax exemption for the following. for the following, Block 331.03, Lot 7, in the amount of $5,266.25. Block 32.06, Lot 34, in the amount of $8,551.01. And Block 169.07, Lot 28.01, in the amount of $5,878.40.
Any objections? Next item.
Authorization for the clerk to advertise for the RFPs for professional services for the upcoming year, 2026.
Any objection? Next item.
Coin toss requests for the corner of Washington and Ernston Road received from the Cervil Memorial High School Theater Curtain Callers on October 25th and 26th, and Cervil Boy Scout Troop 97 on November 8th and 9th.
Any objections? Next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any age limits for people doing coin tosses? Can they be minors, or they have to be over 18?
No, I think it's adults.
Adults. Okay, so both these groups know that, though, right? Because there's going to be some potentially under 18-year-olds. Okay, thank you.
Authorization to award a contract to Power Place Inc. of White House Station for Mammoth 850 snow equipment through ESCNJ Co-op Contract in an amount not to exceed $34,069.43.
Any objections? Next item.
Authorization to award a non-fair and open contract to CNC Lift Truck Inc. for a Hankcha diesel forklift in an amount not to exceed $36,750,000.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to extend the current contract for snow plowing and removal service with BMW Construction Company, Inc. in South River for one year with no increase in price.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to extend the current contract for routine and emergency repairs to water, sewer, and public works infrastructure with BMW Construction Company, Inc. in South River for one year with no increase in price.
Any objection? Okay, Business Administrators' report, Glenn.
Progress, sir.
CFO's report, Danielle.
We're progress.
Borough Engineers' report, Jay Cornell.
Thank you, Mayor. One item, the improvements to Deerfield Road. We're receiving bids for that project later this week. So if everything's in order, we'd like a resolution awarding the contract at your next meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Borough Attorneys' report.
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public portion, which has a five-minute limit. Are there any questions or comments? Danielle, questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Jim? Come on.
Thank you, Mayor, Jim Robinson, Parlin. First want to say, I appreciated Councilwoman Novak's comments about the bond. They may be great things, but we really ought to know what roads are being talked about, what vehicles are being purchased, what parks are being improved. I think most families spend more time discussing $1,700 that they might spend it as a family than the council spent discussing $17 million in bonds. I want to talk about, Mayor, a mailer went out recently that talked about something that happened 27 years ago. I want to talk about something that happened 26 years ago. 26 years ago, Mayor, you told me it was time to put things behind us and move on, and you asked me to run your first mayoral campaign. We talked about a lot of things, and you promised me you would be controlling over development, preserving open space. We even put out a release saying that, when the borough sold property, the money should go into a special account so that it could be used only to purchase new property to preserve. You said you'd complete the Main Street bypass to relieve traffic, which was something that John McCormick started. We came up, or I came up with the slogan, "Make Cervil better, not bigger." I spent a lot of time with you, Mayor. We met on Saturdays at your house for breakfast. We also met at my house. I made you stand in the patio doorway because you smoked during those meetings. Maybe you remember that. We marched in the New York City St. Patrick's Day Parade together. We went to the beefsteak dinner at the Patterson Firehouse. We even went to the governor's mansion together. Couple of times, we had Chinese in the city. We were very close and friendly. A lot of times, we met with the Indian community in Edison. So many times, a group of us would get together at the old Camillios. We were close friends and confidant. You gave me my first flip phone, remember those? You said it was a tax write-off, not to worry about it. And then after the election, you gave me an Aaron chair that I still have. It's a great, great chair, very comfortable. We won that election. And for about a year, I wrote every ad, every speech, every letter you put your name on. I wrote your first annual message. I joked that every kid wanted to grow up to be the mayor of their town, but the smart ones wanted to grow up to be the engineer. We were very close and talked about a lot of borough business. You shared information and reports with me, and I sat behind you at the council agenda sessions in Room 10. I even did some legal research for you. Remember when I said you had 10 days to veto an ordinance exclusive of Sundays? And the borough attorney said, "No, that's not right." And he had to go check it. He went into the clerk's office, and sure enough, he saw that I was right. Our break in the relationship came when you called me from a developer's car and told me what he wanted to put in Town Lake. And I told you that was contrary to everything you had said in your campaign. And your response was, "You wrote that stuff, not me." A recent mailer said I was chair of a council campaign. I'm not. The last campaign I chaired was yours, Mayor. I help campaigns, I give advice to you, Councilman Zabrowski, to you, anyone who talks, Stash gave you, talked to you about some things before the last election. I'll give advice to anybody who wants to talk about open space, or land use, or things like that, pilots. Last year, I met with my friend Tony Esposito to give him advice on his Board of Education campaign. We met at the South Side 35 Diner in Morgan. That's the same diner where Donna Roberts and Karen Bailey-Bieber would meet with Tom Polando. I'm sorry Donna's not here to confirm that. Now, the mailer brought up Polando's name. No one, no one worked harder to remove him than me. I came to this council chambers and told the council to stop enabling him. I told the county Democratic Organization about him. John Zabrowski might tell you how many conversations we had about him when he was the chief and what actions I took, some of which I hope remain confidential. The interesting thing is that Herve Blumer and Alberto Rios, whose campaign I am not chairing, never met Tom Polando. You know who did? You know who sat with him and worked with him? Karen Bailey-Bieber, the Republican Chair, sat with him at council meetings, right there. Karen got up at a meeting and said she was working with him on a program. She stood up here and said they were working together on a program about the benefit of pilots. Remember that? Donna Roberts met with him at the diner, worked with him, accepted dinner tickets from him, and got the idea to you, and where do you think the idea to use pilot money for sports uniforms came from? Guess what AA president first came up with that idea? And when he shared it with us, we said, "That's crazy, can't do that."
Jim, your time's up.
Tony Esposito worked closely with
Your time's up, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alberto?
Good evening, Alberto Rios, 196 Washington Road. First, I want to take a moment to thank and commend Councilwoman Mary Novak for bringing up Ordinance Number 2525, which exempts members of the police auxiliary volunteer fire departments and first aid squads from license and fees change charged by the Bureau. It's a thoughtful and practical measure that shows real support for the volunteers who help keep Cervil safe. Thank you for that. Now, on behalf of members of the Indian community who received a recent mailing, I want to address something that really shouldn't be happening in our town. That mailing suggested that if certain people aren't elected, the festival lights might not take place next year. Now, that kind of messaging is unnecessary, misleading, and frankly, disappointing. I've supported every community event in Cervil. I attended most of the concerts at Kennedy Park this summer. Great job to the cultural arts in Sharon. I was at the Cervil Day meeting and talking with residents. I shook most of your hands. I'm volunteering this Friday decorating the scare trail that's happening Saturday, the 18th, and I'm a proud supporter of anything that brings people together, including the Duwali festival lights. So I'd like to ask something simple. Is there anyone in this council who would vote against holding the festival lights next year? I didn't think so. So there you have it. Everyone here supports it. So that letter, which many in the Indian community found threatening, is false. It's fear-mongering, and it's an attempt to divide people who have done nothing but enrich our town with culture, pride, and community spirit. Cervil is stronger when we celebrate all of our traditions and cultures, and that's exactly what I stand for. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Being done, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Roll call. All in favor?
Mayor, may I?
Opposed? Opposed? Mary?
I wasn't going to bring it up, but Alberto did. I, we, we have been attending services at the UES every year for 20 years. And it's usually was only attended by the Democrats. And when Donna was running the last time with Dan, I told her, you know, that she should come to this. And, you know, to say that, you know, the Republicans are the only ones that are doing something for the Indian community, I really was hurt, because we've always been there. I mean, I even bought Indian garb, and I dance, and I enjoy myself. And unfortunately, this year, I got COVID, so I wasn't able to attend. But I've always been there. And during a campaign, I invited the Republican candidates to come to that and to speak to the people and to meet the people and to make it sound like somehow the Republicans are the only ones that care about the Indian community. That was a personal hurt to me, because I've, I believe that, you know, we, I will go any place, anytime, if somebody invites us to go to something, and I will invite the opposition, even if they happen to be running that year. And to make it sound like, you know, somehow we don't, you know, it's just not right. It's just not right. Thank you.
Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.